Okay. Good evening. I hope you're all here for the November 19, 2018, regular city council meeting. If you're not, you're welcome to stay if you're not, but that's what we're gonna have here this evening. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez, absent. Councilmember Hammack, absent. Councilmember Haquez-
Here.
Councilmember Meisner-
Here.
Councilmember Turner-
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith-
Here.
Mayor Troutman-
Here. Thank you. Can we have the invocation by Pastor Keith Nauman of the church at the abbey? Would you please rise?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in Jesus' name, in this Thanksgiving week, with a heart of Thanksgiving, that you've given us the right of government, the right of addressing things. And you've appointed and elected people among us to be our ministers. And we just thank you for them, that they would step forward and be what you've called them to be in this government. Lord, we just thank you for this nation, for its leaders, and for the gifts that you've given us. We just give you praise, and we ask you to bless this meeting tonight, and leave us with a spirit of encouragement from what happens here tonight, that you truly have blessed us, and we give you Thanksgiving. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have two gentlemen that would like to talk city council. However, I think we'll wait until we get to that portion of the business for the stormwater. Is that okay with everybody? Okay? Also want to explain, we have a new system, so that it's helpful. We have on the podium, when you start talking, the green light will go on, and then when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will go on, then the red light goes on when your three minutes are up. And then there's a little counter on there, too. At that time, a hole opens up in the floor, and you fall. No, I'm just kidding. So, everybody gets to talk an equal amount of time, three minutes, and then if we need more time, we possibly can do that, too. But that's kind of a new creation. We'll see how that works. So we have no one else. Would anybody else, Mr. Weed?
Before we start the meeting, can I also make a comment on a totally unrelated subject?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. We're not gonna turn the mic on, but... No, I'm just kidding. Dennis, I'm kidding you.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if we had dispensed with the 15-minute thing at the start. Okay. No, this is just an observation. I was up in Colorado Springs a couple of times in the last week, and price of gas in Colorado Springs is in the 250s. $2.54 is what I paid. It's $2.49 now at Sam's Club on the south end of Colorado Springs. It's $2.97 here. And personally, I think it's disgusting. I think we're being taken advantage of, and I would really like to encourage our local purveyors of gasoline to get with the program and line up our prices in line with the rest of the world. That's just a comment. It's 40 cents a gallon cheaper. I mean, if you're going to Colorado Springs or Pueblo anyhow, buy your gas there. It's not worth going there to get it, but that's just a comment.
Notice there's quite a difference, so... Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Just any general issue at all? Except for Mr. Meisner? All right. Okay, so the two people that I put their names in, we'll do that when we come to the stormwater portion of the meeting, okay? Any council members with any comments or announcements at this time? Ms. Turner?
Well, this is the last time we'll be together before Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and everyone in the city, and those of you who are here tonight. I hope, I know we all have a lot to be thankful for. I'm thankful for all of you. I'm thankful for everyone who comes and tries to help us, and gives us perspective on what we should be doing here. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, we did cancel the vision meeting for Wednesday evening, because we probably would have less council meeting than we have today. And so, Mr. Meisner, did you just say?
I'd just reiterate what Caitlin said, is we really need to be thankful for this process that exists. While at times it gets frustrating for both sides, we do a reasonably good job of listening to each other and trying to move forward, so we appreciate your input and presence.
Thank you. Frank?
Well, the one thing I wanted us all to do, okay? Be grateful for what we have, grateful for the family members we have, and please, when you sit down to eat at that table, those of you who say a prayer, in your prayer, say something for the poor folks in California that have lost a lot of loved ones, you know, and they're not gonna be able to enjoy that. So just think about them also in your prayer at your Thanksgiving dinner. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. That's wonderful. Happy Thanksgiving to all as well. It's been a pleasure this year. I do want to make some business announcements, though. Next Tuesday, we have the consultants for the community recreation center market study. That's Tuesday at 2:30. Councilmembers are invited. It is a publicly posted meeting, where we can review that study and make suggestions for finalization. And also, I would like to invite everybody in Canyon City to come to our Christmas tree lighting. Last year, it was moved to the depot, and it was beautiful on the corner of Highway 50 and Knight Street, absolutely beautiful. And again, we'll be having another tree lighting ceremony. It's December 5 at 5:00 p.m., and there'll be music and lights, and I'm assuming some hot cocoa and all of that. So it's a great way to kick off the holiday season.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Meisner? Mr. Meisner?
You said the 5th?
It's a Wednesday night, 12:05, at 5.
I got the 8th from somebody. Everybody just messed it up.
I had it on Saturday night.
Saturday.
Saturday the 8th.
I got it on...
Saturday?
I have it on December the 8th.
Yeah, that's a Saturday.
Okay, well, good. I got it off of a document-
You'd be there all by yourself.
-in the city. I thought a Wednesday night sounded really weird, but so I'm glad I made that announcement.
Been waiting a long time for the mayor to flip the switch. Is it the 8th? I mean, is that...
It's the 8th, 5 o'clock.
It is on my calendar now, so I'll see you on Saturday.
And I want to thank our city clerk for that, because that's where I got my information, is on the little calendar for dummies here or something.
Okay. Thank you all. So tonight, we'd like to recognize a person that I had really appreciated coming to the fore when we had our city clerk resign. I didn't really know where we were going to go, and I couldn't do that job. Nobody else here could. So Jerry, would you, Jerry Staley, would you come up to the podium? And Jerry got us through an interesting time in the city, stepped in with knowledge, a few years' knowledge as a city clerk, right?
Forty.
Forty, just a few. And I'll tell you how much we have appreciated that, and I personally, because I'm as scatterbrained as anybody, and I know I tried your patience many times, but you did a wonderful job stepping in from day one and getting things going and keeping things going. It was just a very smooth transition until we hired our new city clerk, Cindy. So you've been a selfless public servant who abandoned her peaceful and well-earned retirement to serve the city. And you were actually born and raised here in Canyon City. As a small token appreciation, we would like to give you this plaque and recognize you and honor you for what you've done for our town in the absence of us having a full-time, permanent city clerk. Would you like to come forward, and we'll go down front?
I would love to, but can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's been my pleasure and my honor to serve, and Cindy's gonna do a great job.
She certainly is, so, thank you. Come on up here, and let's...
Come on, Cindy. Come on, Cindy. I forgot hi. There she is. Good job. No, no. How important? What do you do? Together? No. Thank you so much.
Jerry, thank you so much. Go back into retirement, but I understand you're not going to do that.
No.
You're gonna get rid of Pantos' crops nested, all right?
Oh, yes, I am. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. You're very welcome. My pleasure, believe me. Thank you. I forgot to thank my husband, who's sitting there watching. Thank you. Nobody has an office.
And Mr. Staley, what is your first name? Mike. So did Mike ever say, "What on earth are you doing?" Huh?
That's what he always says. Go ahead and have a good time.
That's a good man he's learned.
Yes, he is.
I've learned of being married is that, "Yes, dear," works real well. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to ask for adoption of the consent agenda, and let me get to my paper here. Would you review the consent agenda?
Mayor and council, this one's pretty short and sweet. Item 8A, we authorize a street closure for December 1st for the Chamber of Commerce Parade of Lights event, which will be on Main Street between 3rd and 11th between 3:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. And then there's the file and list of bills. Those are the only two items for the consent. Okay? Any questions?
Any additions or corrections or anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt the consent agenda. Second?
Second, Ms. Turner. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Jerry, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Haquez-
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner-
Aye.
Councilmember Turner-
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith-
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Then I would like to open a public hearing. The public hearing is to consider the Central Park Minor Subdivision to create five lots at 2845 Central Avenue. This is case number 2018-010. And could we have a staff report, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This evening, we are here to conduct a public hearing on a request by Vicki and Michael Pollan for approval of a minor subdivision at 2845 Central Avenue. The subject property is a vacant 4.59-acre parcel located east of Field Avenue between Central Avenue and Elizabeth Street. It is owned RL, Rural Living Residential. It is surrounded by residential zoning. To the east and north, the site is bordered by existing mobile home parks. To the west is a large undeveloped R3 high-density residential zone, and to the south are existing large-lot, single-family residential uses within an R2 medium-density residential zone district. The subject property itself has a relatively level grade, but it sits slightly lower than Elizabeth Street to the north. Although there is evidence that the property previously contained a residence, the only structure remaining on site is a 10-foot-by-24-foot framed garage and storage building. As previously stated, the subject property is owned RL, Rural Living, which requires a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. The lots proposed within this subdivision range from a low of 32,350 square feet to a high of 48,477 square feet. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into five lots. Lots 1, 2, and 3 will access Elizabeth Street. Lots 4 and 5 will access Central Avenue to the south. This arrangement was recommended by the city engineer's office to minimize the number of driveway curb cuts on the busier of the two streets. In order to qualify as a minor subdivision under the city of Canyon City's regulations, the proposed subdivision must meet the following criteria. The parcel subject to the subdivision request cannot be more than 10 acres in size. Central Park Minor Subdivision is 4.59 acres. The resulting subdivision will create five or fewer lots. Five lots is what is proposed with the Central Park Minor Subdivision process. All resulting lots will meet both minimum lot area and minimum lot width along the street frontage. Within the RL Zone District, those minimums are 15,000 square feet in area and 100 feet in width at the street edge, respectively. The Central Park Minor Subdivision exceeds those minimum area and width requirements on all five lots. All lots must access a public right-of-way, and it cannot be a right-of-way being created with this subdivision. The Central Park Minor Subdivision process proposes the five lots being created access to existing streets, Elizabeth Street to the north and Central Avenue to the south. All lots must be served with utilities, including water, sanitary sewer, electricity, and natural gas. Staff has been advised that existing utilities are available within both the adjacent street rights-of-way. Staff therefore finds that the proposed Central Park Minor Subdivision meets all of those criteria. Staff also finds that the proposed subdivision in single-family uses will be consistent with the residential character of this neighborhood. The existing lots to the south of this parcel are all above minimum lot size for the R2 Zone, and between these homes and the mobile home parks that exist to the east and north, these neighborhoods have been in place for decades. This will be a continuation of the residential character of this area and is supported by the city's comprehensive plan. During the planning commission's deliberations, there was a condition of approval which, at the applicant's request, was removed. The plat submitted had a 10-foot right-of-way dedication along the north side of Central Avenue. The major thoroughfare plan calls for a total of 20 feet for Central Avenue, so initially the city engineer requested that this change be added to the plat documents. The applicant is willing to voluntarily dedicate the 10 feet, but not the full 20 feet in right-of-way width. After discussing it with the applicant and reviewing the subdivision regulations in which exactions for right-of-way are not required for minor subdivisions, the city engineer updated his review, eliminating this request for an additional 10 feet. Therefore, staff supported the elimination of this condition. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on October 24, 2018. The commission cited findings of fact that adequate public notice was provided, such that Canyon City had the required jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing. As previously stated, Planning Commission agreed to the applicant's request to eliminate the condition of approval, which would have required an additional 10 feet of right-of-way along Central Avenue. The Planning Commission then unanimously recommended the Central Park Minor Subdivision for approval, subject to the remaining three conditions as described in staff's report. As of today, staff has received no phone calls, positively or negatively regarding this request. There have been no inquiries about the applicant's proposal and no opinions offered positively or negatively about the subdivision request. So with that, staff is prepared to make the following recommendations. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that city council conduct a public hearing regarding the Central Park Minor Subdivision request, and staff and the Planning Commission recommend that city council approve the Central Park Minor Subdivision request, subject to the three remaining conditions contained in staff's report. That would conclude staff's presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions from council. Also present to speak on behalf of this project are Mr. or Mrs. Pollan.
Mr. and Mrs. Pollan? Is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
A little bit.
Okay.
This project, I decided gave an opportunity to develop prime lots over in that area. Nice size, less density, to make it spread out a little bit better. It's the last of quite a few lots that have any city utilities available to them, so I think they'll make good residential properties. But mainly, I just want to thank Patrick and Adam for helping me on this project. I've not dealt with the city before, and they made it very informative for me. They were very helpful, always called me back. So I've enjoyed working with them, hope to do more, and I'd appreciate your approval.
Okay. Any questions of council? Mr. and Mrs. Pollan? Mr. Meisner?
First one, maybe Adam, is on the section four of the staff report, it mentions the lots along Central Avenue will be limited to one access only.
Right. So on our thoroughfares, we try to limit the accesses and the types of movements on those accesses. So typically, we'll allow one driveway per parcel, and typically then we'll have them sign an access control agreement that then allows the city to make modifications to their access in the future if there's an issue.
So you're saying one access per lot?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't read it that way.
Yes, go ahead.
Second question. There's mention about, as we develop, we're gonna address any drainage issues?
Right. So since this is a minor subdivision, then we take care of reviewing drainage during time of construction, because we don't know what they're going to build there yet, as far as houses and size of houses and that sort of thing.
That's not a floodplain, is it?
No.
Is that gonna require an elevation of the ground there because of that groundwater?
For some of the parcels, for some of the lots, yes. The structure would have to be elevated to drain properly, yes.
Mr. Haquez?
The one question I have is, which lot gets to keep that shed that was fixed up real nice?
There'll be Lot 5 in the southeast corner there.
And I want to commend you, folks, you know, when you tore down the other stuff, cleaned it up and everything, and I was surprised to see the one little shed that we're talking about fixed up the way it is. That made a big improvement in there, so good luck to whoever gets the shed ahead of time.
Well, I have to give credit to Chris Fotopich, because he had the property and did the cleanup before I bought it, so I was glad he cleaned it up.
Well, good luck on your project, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like...
Are there any questions of staff or council? Then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion and a second. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the city council for the city of Canyon City approved the Central Avenue Minor Subdivision, subject to the three conditions contained in the staff's report.
Second. Second, Mr. and Mrs. Pollan, thank you. Any questions on that motion? If none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Haquez-
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner-
Aye.
Councilmember Turner-
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith-
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Pollan.
Congratulations.
You did take a sight and make it very nice-looking compared to what was there. Okay. We have a discussion, consideration of the 2019 city budget. Invite the administrator to give a staff report.
Mayor, the only real update from our last presentation is an adjustment of $3 million. Instead of a final budget of $36.6 million, it'll be $39.6 million, and it's really three major items that drive that. First is $800,000 we had projected to spend this year for property acquisition that will be rolled into 2019. Also, our wayfinding signage, that was budgeted $384,000. Clearly, we're not prepared for implementation of that program in this fiscal year, so that will roll forward. And the last but largest piece is, because we didn't get to do as many projects this year, because we changed the process, even though I believe, long-term, it's gonna save the citizens more money because of increased competition for our 2A road construction projects, we'll be rolling $1.7 million forward into next year. So instead of roughly having a $3.5 to $4 million worth of 2A money next year, it'll be $5.8 million, so we'll be doing more work next year. So those are the three key components to the budget that weren't addressed at our last session.
Any questions from the administrator? Ms. Smith?
I do have a question. On Exhibit A of the general fund budget statement for the Royal Gorge Bridge revenues for 2018, is it for $1 million or an estimate of just $706,000? I thought we were getting more than $1 million.
Remind you, we break up that money. Some goes to the quality-of-life fund, some goes to Parks Improvement Fund, some to the general funds. That's only the general fund piece. The total, I believe, was $2.8?
Yeah, and we look at that based on the expenditures in the parks first-
Yeah.
...and then call it life, and the remaining balance applicable to the general fund. That's why you see the variances.
Yeah. And we're real happy with that revenue source. It continues to grow, and they continue to do a good job up at the bridge.
That's exciting. It's good. Any other questions of council? Okay, then. I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second. Ms. Turner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 12, Series 2018.
Could we, would you mind if I, we'd like to go ahead and get Resolution Number 12 and Ordinance Number 34. Can we do that together?
Certainly.
Would you mind?
Yes.
Okay.
So in addition to Resolution Number 12, I'd also move that we adopt Ordinance 34, Series of 2018.
Would you mind to second that?
Can we combine those two?
You can.
Yeah. Do you have any questions about B, which we could answer in advance? That's just a semi-annual reconciliation. As you know, our city charter is very unique. We require to balance line item budgets in excess of $5,000, which is, I've never worked anywhere, that's required. You usually have to reconcile, if the fund is in excess of the budget, in this case, anything in excess of $5,000 per line item has to be reconciled, so this is what this would do. We do this traditionally in March of every year, and at this time, every year. If you're interested in the future, we certainly bring to you the opportunity to reduce these reconciliations by budgeting on a category basis, like personnel costs and operating expenses. Probably, there's traditionally four or five major line items, but because of our charter, unless we change the charter, we have to go through this drill twice a year. It's very time-consuming, clearly for the finance department, but we're all ears if you want to remain with this system or revise it for the future.
Well, I believe that would, doesn't that come at step 11?
Right.
We're looking at Resolution 12 and Ordinance 34. Then what you're talking about is the transfer of budgeted funds within the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Turner's motion was to approve Resolution Number 12, and Ordinance Number 34. We'll get to the next one. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Meisner?
Well, I see Mr. Awark's question as being separate, but is Resolution 34, I'm confused about Resolution 34 and Resolution 13. Are they the same or different?
No, it's Ordinance Number 34, Resolution Number 12. That is, Resolution 12, you are approving the budget for 2019. That set up the basis for the ordinance to approve for appropriation. So the next one is Ordinance Number 34, that we are approving for first reading on 2019 budget for appropriation.
I'm less confused.
Well-
I got it.
Got it?
We're talking about 19.
19. The next one we're gonna talk about is what's remaining on 18. Correct?
Okay. And then relative to Mr. Awark's question, is, I had a brief discussion, this is my fundamental problem. As we move into Number 11, which I'm not trying to jump, but inevitably, we're gonna come to Number 11. I have a fundamental problem approving transactions relative to a pre-approved budget that have already happened, just from a fundamental standpoint. And the solution that I see there, I realize those things happen, and those are expectations that we have with the administrator and the department heads, that there's that expectation that that's their responsibility to manage within those funds. And giving that expectation from my standpoint, I would just as soon approve, as Mr. Awark has mentioned, line item-
Well, I, I see Mr. O'Rourke's question as being separate, but is Resolution 34, I'm confused about Resolution 34 and Resolution 13. Are they the same or different?
It's a, ordinance Number 34, Resolution Number 12. That is, Resolution 12, you are approving the budget for 2019. That set up the, the basis for the ordinance to approve for appropriation. So the next one is the ordinance Number 34, that we are approving for first reading on 2019 budget for appropriation.
I'm less confused.
Well.
I got it.
Got it?
We're talking about 19?
19. The next one we're going to talk about is what's remaining on 18. Correct?
Okay, and then relative to Mr. O'Rourke's question, is, I had a brief discussion, my fun, this is my fundamental problem. As we move into Number 11, which I, I'm not trying to jump, but inevitably, we're going to come to Number 11. I have a fundamental problem approving transactions relative to a pre-approved budget that have already happened, just from a fundamental standpoint. And the solution that I see there, I, I realize those things happen, and those are expectations that we have with the administrator and, and the department heads, that there's that expectation, that that's their responsibility to manage within those funds. And giving that expectation from my standpoint, I would just as soon approve, as Mr. O'Rourke has mentioned, line items by category, and having that responsibility for department heads be within those categories and saying, that's your budget, spend it as appropriate between you and the administrator. Because I'm here basically approving by the current process whether or not we should spend money on boots for the police department. That's fundamentally what we're doing. That should be a chief decision and an administrator's decision and not mine. I care more about the fact that he's got a $5 million budget and he's within budget, and he's spending those funds appropriately. So I think that's the value, and if we can move in that direction, that would be my preference.
We appreciate that. I mean, we can bring that, actually Catherine's already designed an ordinance. We can bring it either on December 3rd, or we can do it in January, but we think it will reduce a lot of unnecessary work and still maintain the council's fiduciary role and responsibility and oversight of the budget.
Yes, what we have to do is this because that's what the charter tells us to do now, lacking an ordinance, as Mr. O'Rourke is saying, and so we have to do this now. We can still see the breakouts, but their final approval will be on the bottom line of what they have spent that year. And if there's extras, it would be then the next ordinance, which is 11, will be moved into another fund.
Correct? Mr. Patel? You can shut me off at any time.
I appreciate Jim's proposal. I think that will reduce a lot of headache what department heads go through.
Less busy work? We will still see the spend, expenditures, but we're just looking at the bottom line, and then the department heads are responsible, that's their responsibility. We'll still see it. So, Mr. O'Rourke, and it makes just a lot less busy work. And we trust that they know how to do theirs.
Right, and I realize we're looking at 2020.
Okay.
Or 2019.
2019, yeah.
Okay, so I have.
No, 2020.
No, 19.
19.
This is 19.
Because next year, next year this time.
Next year, when we do the reclassifications.
Right, but for 2020 budget.
No, it could apply for the 2019 budget. We can bring you this, Catherine's already designed the ordinance, had it in the hopper, so we can bring this here so it is effective January 1st for fiscal year 2019.
Okay, so I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Smith? Any discussions on that motion and second?
We're not talking about 11 right now, right?
Not yet. Nope, we're going, we're going to talk about 11 next. Ms. Smith?
I just very simply want to thank Harry and please extend my gratitude to the staff, the finance department. You guys do an excellent work. I always appreciate the clean bill of health you get from the auditors and the work that has gone into this budget, and I just want you to know that it's publicly recognized by the City Council.
We appreciate, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on that motion and second? Did anybody second it?
Yes.
Ms. Smith seconded it. See, you're making me confused. Okay, any more discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Now, let's go on to 11.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
To the attorney, if we approve the, the 19 budget with all these individual line items, can we change that? And not, and have accountability only for categories?
You can always amend the budget.
So we'd have to have a resolution to amend the budget?
We've already put together a draft ordinance that would take away the...
Subcategories.
Subcategories. But yeah, it could, it could be effective for the, in 2019.
Okay.
Okay, satisfactory? Okay. All right, and number 11, consideration adoption by title only of Resolution Number 13, Series 2018, entitled Resolution Authorizing a Transfer of Budgeted Funds Within 2018 Budget for the City of Canyon City, Colorado. Would you like to discuss more, Mr. Administrator? Or have we done that?
I think you know what we want.
Okay, everybody clear on what's going on there?
No.
Okay, you do too, don't you? These are funds that have not been spent as...
I said, am I clear? I said, no.
There's a question and answer.
Okay, well. Mr. Hockes?
I don't know if this is appropriate time to do it, but we're looking at it. The question I have here is, and I don't doubt that they're doing it the proper way, but I'm looking at the, the resource officer and the overtime. Is the city paying all of that overtime, or is the school district subsidizing it?
Yeah, the school district pays 75% of the cost, we pay 25%.
So that's our 25% only?
Right.
I just want to make sure the school district pays their, their fair share.
Okay, that's a good question, Frank. It is. Mr. Meisner?
So the $14,400 in property cleanup costs on page two, that looks to me like that was leftover funds?
Oh, boy, $14,400.
Page two, about a quarter of the way down the page. It's 359, 197, 359.
Yes, that's the, there's available balance in that line item, so we are reclassing.
So are we taking that $14,000 and spending it on something else?
Something else, because they, they already spend what, you know, the, by the end of the year, I don't anticipate they're spending more, and there is some balance left in that line item that we are using for other line items. It's reclassification.
I was under the understanding, Ms. Smith, if you could help me or not help me, I understood that that property cleanup fund would only be used for property cleanup and would continue to collect monies in that account if we don't use it. So if next year, we, what are we, don't use this year, we've got available for next year and maybe a bigger project?
This is just expenditures. If it is a revenue collector, it's separate. We are just suggesting the expenditure line items.
We rebudget every year for every line item. We don't encumber unless, usually capital items, we would encumber, and like I've just mentioned, we'll roll those costs over, but we don't do that on a line item basis. That would make the budgeting process impossible.
Well, you don't do it for everything, but there's a few things that might...
This is doing nothing but reclassification of the line items, and there is no effect on the fund balance or departmental budget.
I think Meisner is saying that shouldn't that $14,000 be rolled over to, added to the 2019 budget? Because there will be some...
Because we believe we've adequately budgeted for next year, the proposed cost.
That's not the question. The question is, the $14,000 that we allocated for this year, you're going to spend that money on something else?
Yeah.
And not hold it for next year? Is that correct?
Next year, we already budgeted for what is needed for next year.
Yeah.
You're not answering my question.
You're proposing that we encumber this money? You could, but in theory, would we do that? We have hundreds of line items.
I realize that, but this is a specific line item that we created, knowing that as we progressed, we always wanted plenty of money in that account.
Yeah.
Well, I see with the cleanup of Gus's property that that could be needed.
His cost will be separate, that'll fall under capital.
Money will be always available. This is just a reclassification of expenditures. It's very difficult to explain, but the money what you want to spend for cleanup will always be there.
Well, speaking of rolling over funds, Adam, on page three, under the hydraulic ditch crossings for $200,000, is that rolled over into, is that being rolled over in the savings for a future project for high ditch crossings, or is that, has that been spent somewhere else? Because I thought we were supposed to be saving that as it accumulates till we have enough money.
If you look at next year's budget, there's a budget for that. We don't, and maybe Harry, I mean, what I'm hearing is, we don't, we don't, there's very few funds where we bank money in, so to speak. So we always, we always balance last year's budget, and then we move forward with a new budget that has adequate funds for what you want to do next year. So there's no direction to have a, a, a bank set aside for the hydraulic ditch money where if we don't spend it, it just sits there in an account. We do have some accounts like that, but very few.
I have an impression for ditch crossings, we did, because we'd have to save that $200,000 till we had enough money to actually do a ditch crossing.
Yeah, but we, I'm just saying, we don't currently do it that way.
Budget expires every year by December 31st, and we reappropriate in the following year whatever the expenditure is.
So if there's a, so if there's an overage, it, it'll show a positive balance in the general fund, and then next year, if you want to spend $400,000 on ditches, then you would budget for that. Does that make sense?
So when's the last time we did do a ditch crossing?
It's been a number of years.
Why?
Other priorities.
Because we don't have money.
Yeah.
Because we keep spending it.
I'm saying if we reserved that, if you didn't spend it in 2018 and we added it to 2019, so we could eventually have enough money to do it.
Yeah, it's a, I think it's a matter of semantics. You're not reserving it, you just budget more next year for the ditch, and then something else would not have funds.
I realize it's semantics, but where did it go? I'm not an accountant, but where did it go? Where did the...
So there's no specific, it didn't go somewhere specific?
It just got spent.
It ends up in the fund balance, and then you start all over again, beginning fund balance.
I think that's where there's some consternation with the ditch companies. Every year, we budget a hydraulic ditch crossing to be fixed, and it never, ever, ever happens. It just, you said it's been a number of years. At what point do we need to rebudget it so that it actually happens?
I think we're heading off in the weeds here. When the, the budgeting that they're talking about is the money is left over, it either, I guess it could go into a big pile, and then we allocate for that next year.
That's what's done, yes.
That's what's done. You can't, what they're talking about is sequestering or, or banking what you're talking about. That would be crazy, because you would have every, the shoes, you would have a $200 fund for shoes because they didn't spend it. What the city does is when it, how this stuff gets moved, and then we reallocate it. So if you want $200,000 next year for ditch crossings, that's what you put in the budget.
I, I recognize your explanation, but tell me where the money for the ditch in the 2018 budget, where did that money go?
It's going to go into just that big lump that you're going to allocate.
That's not what this is saying.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't. You're transferring it to another account, are you not?
No.
No.
Where did it go?
It goes in the fund balance, and then it starts with the higher fund balance.
The fund balance being that big pile of money that you're, that we're going to allocate for 2019.
Okay. Another question?
Yes, sir.
It also looks like we had $30,000 in street resurfacing that didn't get used?
Correct.
Why is that?
Well, because we, we estimate at the beginning of the year what we're going to spend. We do, we got lucky this year and had wonderful bid, and by the time you get contracts written and those sorts of things and, and build projects, you're going to have sometimes left over if, if the prices were right, so to speak. So that is money then that didn't get spent? So if I, if I, based on last year's prices, I, I estimate we're going to spend $400,000 on asphalt, and asphalt comes in 50 cents cheaper, then we're not going to spend the $400,000. And, and a lot of it has to do with your time constraint, how long it takes to get a bid out, award a job, make a change order, actually get the work done. In a perfect world, you would, you would just keep spinning until every penny is spent.
The other side of that is, it's like the federal budget, which is a mess. It's use it or lose it. And you've heard, even when I was in the Air Force, you either spent the doggone money, you're not getting it next year. In this particular case, it goes right back to us so we can reallocate it. So Adam doesn't sit and say, I, $32,000, I've got to go out and make or find some potholes to spend it, or I'm not getting the money next year. That's not how this budget works. It doesn't work like that. State and federal.
What? It can.
Well, but we see it, and we know how much, from Harry, how much we're going to spend. So if they don't spend it, it comes right back to us for respending in the following year, as compared to, like my example, if he didn't spend $32,000, he's, by the end of the year, he's got to find some way to find $32,000 with a widget, so for fear, he won't get that 32 next year.
Right, so on crack seal, we don't know, it's paid by a pound, and you don't know how much, so you say, you guessing, you say, okay, go crack seal Street A, and they go and crack seal it. By the time you get the bill for how many pounds they used, it may have been less or more than what you guessed.
Okay.
And then it's, then there's not time to turn around and go, oh, okay, go over and do this street real fast. Their crew is gone.
But it's not incumbent...
It's just not practical to...
He's not pressured to, to spend it. There's more of a realization that, well, we didn't spend it, let's put it all, and then goes out, 2019, we get this lump, we go to...
Right, we didn't want to go out and buy $30,000 with those shovels to prove that we spent all the money.
Big shovels.
And that's fine, and I totally understand and agree with that, but I still get cranky that every year, we budget $200,000 for ditch crossing, and it never gets done.
Well, but more importantly is every year, we can only afford $200,000, and you're telling me that the $200,000 got put back in the pool that we could use next year, but next year, we don't use the, we don't use it. Based on your philosophy of where you put the money, we should be able to budget $400,000 for the ditch crossing in 2019.
And you can do that.
You can do that.
Okay, then why aren't we doing it?
Well, then, that's what we can do.
You don't recognize the problem, Mr. Mayor.
I do recognize...
I'm just saying.
Your question, I do. It's, then we don't give, we don't have raises, we don't do other things. It's, you have all that...
No, it's, it was money that was carried over.
And you spent it.
If you end up doing that, then if you want to do any special project in the middle of the year, you cannot, because you already allocated that fund to specific reason here in the, for example, for ditch. Now, this project might not be finished for three years, and you are accumulating, you could have used that money for some other project, so...
Which means you couldn't do the ditch project, because you keep spending the money on something else.
If that is important to you, yes.
It is important to me.
Yeah.
Real important.
Yeah, well...
Well, you said on the, on other projects, not on that project. Because you must have, you set, you made the budget.
And the, I mean, if you're focused on a ditch crossing issue, that's completely separate from the stormwater discussion. Ditch crossings have nothing to do with stormwater. Ditch crossings are...
They still have ditch crossings that need to be done.
Ditch crossings are our infrastructure for our roads to cross the ditch, so...
And you put requirements on it that the irrigation company has to pay for some of it, or the county has to pay for something, and that doesn't happen, so we're not going to spend at all. It's like, that's, those are the parameters, you stick on it.
That's fine, I have no problem with that. If you don't spend it, it's a shell game.
No, it's, that's the way it works.
It still could be a shell game.
Okay, where are we? I'm going to ask for a motion and a second for number 11. Mr. Hockes?
Mayor, members of council, I would make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 13 on the first reading.
Second?
Second, Ms. Turner, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Nay.
Aye.
Mayor Troutman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number 12. This is a second reading. It's an ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, amending certain water rate schedules set forth in the city's water code relative to water service provided by the Canyon, the Canyon City Water Department, a water activity enterprise. We have a discussion by the city administrator.
We have a discussion by the city administrator.
Very simply, Mayor and council, this would raise water rates across the board by 3% to cover increasing operational capital costs. For the average resident that consumes roughly 10,000 gallons per month, that would be an increase of 99 cents per month.
Any questions of staff? Administrator? Okay, then I ask for a motion and a second. Ms. Turner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we would adopt ordinance number 29, series of 2018, on second reading.
Oh, second? The lack of second?
I will second it.
Second, Ms. Smith. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Unanimously, carried.
Okay. The next is the stormwater one. So we still have our gentleman here. It's a second reading, an adoption by title only of the ordinance 30, series 2018, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Increasing the Base Rate Used to Calculate Stormwater Management Fees Chargeable by the City's Stormwater Utility Enterprise." Would you... Mr. Administrator, anything to say?
Yes, Mayor, council, this base rate would solely fund the principal interest related to a proposed $8 million capital improvement program for stormwater, the issuance of certificates of participation. For the average resident with approximately 3,600 square feet of impervious area, typically a roof, a driveway, that would be a net increase to their monthly bill of $4.23. For the average commercial business, which has approximately 19,000 square feet of impervious surface, again, larger parking lots related to commercial businesses and roof lines, their average cost will go up $21.79.
Any questions of staff? Okay. Mr. Weed, would you like to approach the podium, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I was here two weeks ago at this meeting, and suggested that there needs to be a better way to calculate the stormwater fee, and it was suggested that, well, maybe I should come up with one, and I said... So I did. I gave you each a handout. I don't know that I'll be able to go over it in detail in three minutes, but essentially, the big problem I have is that the huge burden of the stormwater fee, or a disproportionate burden of the stormwater fee, is put on business properties. Business properties that are required to have paved parking. And in some cases, mine as an example, I don't have any stormwater runoff from my property. I was required by the city to build a pond, no drainage. Any water that falls in my parking lot goes into a pond and soaks into the ground. I have zero runoff. Anyhow, so, I got some numbers from Harry. You've probably seen most of those numbers. I went on the city's website, try and take a stab at another missing number in this. A very large contributor to the stormwater fee, or to stormwater in Canyon City, is streets, pavement. And I... From the website, it says we have around 100 miles of paved roads in town. I just took a stab at it and said, "Probably the average road width, if you take into consideration all the different roads, is about 40 feet." That gives you 20 million square feet of impervious surface of roads. Everybody uses those roads, and the businesses are the ones that are bearing the brunt of paying for the stormwater on that. So the calculations I did on here take into effect... They're taking into consideration that the stormwater contribution from streets should be borne by everybody equally, and not by businesses disproportionately. And so my proposal... My proposal is that... Or my comment first, is that the current way that we calculate our stormwater fee is elementary. It's... Does not... Personally, I don't think it has the proper amount of thought that went into it. It's much more complex than just an impervious surface fee. There's... The street portion of the stormwater should be distributed equally among the properties. And so if you look at these different calculations, there's two alternatives, I don't have time to explain them, but that stormwater fee from streets should be distributed. There's 6,000 properties in town. Divide the contribution of the street stormwater by every property in town. Everybody pays an equal share for that. And then there's a charge for impervious surface on the balance. And I worked out the numbers to show you how it comes out. You get the exact same amount of money, sorry. You get the exact same amount of money, you just do it differently. I mean, it's just... Everybody uses the streets, not just the businesses. I'll happy to entertain questions.
Okay. Anybody in council, one? Mr. Weed?
Well, I have a question, it might be more for Cory. Would this be a creative way to make it legal for the general budget to help alleviate or pay into the stormwater fund without getting into problems with Tabor?
Having just seen this about 10 seconds ago, I don't know. I mean, literally, Tony just handed it to me. So I don't know.
And I have another question for you, Mr. Weed. Is there any precedence of any other municipalities charging themselves a stormwater fee on their streets?
Well, there is a precedent on cities charging a stormwater fee per parcel, and Colorado Springs does that. And I think this is a much more innovative solution in that you've broken it into two parts. There's a per parcel fee and an impervious surface fee. And, I mean, my real request here is... I understand we need to come up with money for stormwater. I think there's a much better and a much fairer way to do it, and the request is, don't propose just a straight across-the-board 40... Don't approve an across-the-board 45% increase. I honestly think this is worth looking into, and it's not going to go into effect until the first of the year anyhow, and you've got time to consider it.
Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Weed, I don't get the relationship or connection between streets and how that winds up being a burden on business. I mean, you're paying the same... You're paying the same stormwater fee per foot as I am.
Yes, but a third of all the stormwater contribution comes from streets.
So shouldn't...
And nobody's paying for that, or should the city pay for that?
I don't disagree that the city should pay for it, but shouldn't we deduct a third from both of our fees? Is that what you did?
No, what I did is, I said, "Take the stormwater fee, apply it to the 20 million square feet of surface area." I mean, that's an alternative one, that's what it is. If you applied the stormwater fee to the city's streets, it would generate $50,980, okay? Of the 90... Where's that number? Of the $93,214 that we collect monthly on a stormwater fee now, if you assess the streets at the current assessment rate, that would generate $51,000, leaving a balance of, I got it on here, like $43,000, $42,000. That would then be... Then you can calculate what an effective stormwater rate should be for the impervious surface. So, like in the first example, if you use our current stormwater fee, it's .002459 cents per square foot. That would... It would, like I said, it would generate $50,980. So every parcel in town would pay a $8.12 parcel fee. And then you take the other... The remaining $42,000, and divide it by the 36 million square feet of impervious surface between commercial and residential, and you come up with that highlighted rate of .001155 instead of .002459.
How do you define parcel? And I'll ask Adam that, too. I mean, like, my home is one parcel?
Right.
And your business is one parcel?
Yes, exactly.
Is that legal?
Yeah, whatever is legally defined and deeded separately can be sold and owned separately.
Is a parcel?
Yep.
Is that the same as a flat rate, which was considered illegal by...
That's where I'm concerned, is that...
A portion.
The city can certainly charge itself, if it wanted, based on its impervious square foot.
Right.
But when the amount charged to the... Whether it's commercial or residential is based on a flat fee, you still have the same problem, which is that you're not doing it based on... You're treating... It does walk and talk more like a tax than a fee. If you took whatever the balance was and did it based on some impervious square foot, that might pass faster, but it's the flat fee that becomes a problem, the remaining problems, or the remaining properties.
And I'm not proposing a flat fee. I'm proposing a per parcel fee and an impervious surface fee.
Well, it's a combination of a fixed expense and then a variable expense. But no matter which way you cut it, I agree with Cory. The fixed expense looks like and walks like a tax. It's not directly related to the cost and the benefits, like the impervious variable fee is.
Okay. Just a minute, Ms. Hockes.
I would disagree. I mean, it's directly related to the surface area of the streets.
But in a generic sense, if you were to take it down and measure the street in front of your house, then that would be a direct benefit. Yours is more generic. You're just taking the entire impervious surface of our streets and dividing it by number of parcels. Well, each parcel has a different length of street in front of it. I may have a big house with a lot of street in front of me versus a smaller house. That's an unfair expense. It's not directly related.
Colorado Springs gets away with it.
We don't disagree. I'm the challenge.
We're not Colorado Springs.
They arrived at their fee by backing into it. They needed to raise X number of dollars to pay for their court expenses, so they just backed into it, and that was the easiest way of doing it.
Okay, thank you. Let's have Mr. Hockes.
My question is going to be, it looks like, you know, every time we come up with stormwater fees, we do a lot of work, have our people do a lot of research and everything else to come up with what they feel is the proper fee structure to accomplish the goals that we want to do. And then we get to the point here, we did it on first reading, passed it on first reading, now we're looking at, when are, folks, when are we going to do our job as council people and get this thing done? Now, if we delay this thing again, do we have time to get everything done that everybody wants to get done? I don't have a problem with making things justifiable. The problem I have is with this council wanting to get something done. We give it to the people who look at it to get it done, they come back with something to us, we pass it on first ordinance, disrespecting what Mr. Weed and all the other people, they don't want any fees, they... Then we get to this point where we've got a new idea, a new theory of how to solve this problem. I would think that those people that did all the work to get us to this point where we got it passed on first reading, did the job that needed to be done. And it's our time to... For us to do our job. We keep talking about it's a monster, it's this, it's that. Let's get this thing going. Take the heat for it, okay?
I'm going to have to respectfully disagree. I mean, this stormwater fee was passed 15 years ago or something, and back then, I was on city council, and I objected to the fact that we don't take into consideration the streets, and that the businesses were being overburdened. And I came to this council meeting two weeks ago and said, "I ask you to delay a consideration of this fee until we could come up with a more equitable way." And I absolutely agree with you, Councilman Hockes, that council should do its job, and doing its job is doing a fair job to everybody. I understand that businesses don't vote, and that you'll take the heat from the citizens, because they're going to end up paying more per parcel, but it's not fair.
But this is an ordinance to equalize everybody. It's not an ordinance to benefit one specific agenda, okay? It's not an ordinance designed to... And I understand what you're talking about, the business owner, but this is not an ordinance to say, "Okay, we're doing harm to the business people, but we can go ahead and not worry about doing harm to the regular people." This is an ordinance designed to make it as equal and fair as we can make it for everyone, not just any specific group, for everyone.
That's exactly the point I'm trying to make with this.
Well, and remember that businesses are also getting flooded.
I bet there's more houses that get flooded than businesses.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Weed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weed.
Thank you, Mr. Weed.
Any discussion of council? Does staff?
I have another person.
Oh, Mike Kramowski, do you want to address this at this time?
No, I have this man.
This may be your only time. Okay. All right.
Are we done with discussion?
No, go ahead. Discuss more. I'm going to call for a motion.
Well, my objection to the ordinance isn't the fee. My objection is the verbiage of the whereas, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you. What? The whereas states that the fee is necessary to repay the debt service to fund stormwater improvements.
Okay, got you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that Councilman Hockes is right. This is a messy business, it's tough to do it. We've got to move forward to get... Take care of business and get stormwater fixed. However, I do respectfully say that I'm intrigued with the idea of finding a way to get past the Tabor issues, where we can find general fund money to contribute towards the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, if that would include charging streets sort of impervious surface. I think that's worth having a conversation about, but that's something I think can be had in the future, or some other creative way that we can make that happen, so we're just not always having to resort to being completely self-sufficient.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 30, series of 2018, on second reading.
Okay. Motion's ready. Second?
Second.
Ms. Turner? Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Meisner?
What I would... I would like to see staff at least entertain... One of the problems I have is we have a requirement for drainage and detention on certain business lots. We have a requirement for, not necessarily pavement, but some kind of surfacing, which contributes by their choice to stormwater runoff. But most importantly, in those situations where a business has no stormwater runoff or minimal stormwater runoff, it seems logical that there would be some kind of an adjustment for those particular businesses. A large business on the east side of town that has no detention capabilities, or a built... Well, they have a small pond, but it just doesn't seem fair that a business that has no detention capabilities pays the same as one that has one.
Ms. Turner?
You know, I think the problem with that is, how many residential folks would say, "I don't have any runoff." I mean, I have a three-acre parcel, and 75% of it is pasture land. I don't think I have any runoff either, but I'm still paying based on my impervious surface. And I did want to just maybe correct something that Mr. Weed said. No business is required to pave, so that's not a requirement, that every business have a paved lot. There are alternatives that are available.
At that time, the city did make that a requirement.
But keep in mind that you have, for example, I don't know the size of your lot, let's assume that it's five acres. You're not getting charged your stormwater fee based upon the five acres that has open land. You're only getting charged for the amount of impervious area on that five-acre lot.
And it's the same with businesses. Everyone's being charged based only on their impervious surface.
Right.
Per square foot, so that's... And that's why I think we're talking about that it's the most equitable way we've found so far.
That's held up in courts as being viable and fair.
Right.
Any more discussion?
One comment. You know, and I understand the results with business owners, but I would venture to say, and I don't blame them, I would venture to say, when a business owner, regardless of what it is, gets increasing fees added to their business, what do they do with that? They pass it on to the consumer to make it up for it. So it's not as if something is happening to them, and they have no way to kind of resolve it, but they do. And I understand why they do it. I understand why their prices go up, because... I understand why their prices go up, because things like this happen to them, and they're going to do the best they can to try to keep prices down. Eventually, though, they'll raise costs to the public to help cover some of their expenses. It's a fact and a way of life, folks, you know? When the restaurant owner has to pay more money for his produce, guess what? He raises his minimum prices.
Okay, I think we're getting a little long here. Motion made in seconded. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Nay.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I do want this to stay out in the open. I don't want this to go away and not continue discussing it. I want it on a vision committee meeting or a general government meeting quickly. Frankly, you know, we get flooding in the summertime. I don't see a rush to do this, but I guess we have to. I don't see a rush to borrow the money, but I guess we want to. I don't necessarily. I don't like loans. So I want to keep this on the general government meeting because I believe there's other things. I respect Mr. Weed for doing that, and I want it either a general government meeting very soon or a vision committee meeting very soon, period, and I want it to stay there. This deserves a lot more discussion.
What does?
The stormwater fee and how it's calculated and everything else.
I see, Mr. Mayor, we do need to have projects done in the spring so there isn't any flooding in the summertime. Otherwise, we're still kicking it down the road.
I don't agree, but...
I'm a little surprised because your comments last time, you were in support.
I was, but I think that with what Mr. Weed came up with is plausible. I hadn't thought about it, and I think there's probably other ways that we can also do it.
We can bring it to in January, and we'll come up with a variety of different options for the council's consideration, including Dennis's.
Okay. Stormwater, it seems as though in the past and all my years of being both sides, it's a hot topic when we have the summer rains and floods, and it ceases to be. That becomes a hot topic when we go to raise a fee, then it ceases to be. It's a big deal, and I think you need to keep this going. There's got to be a better way, I think. Okay, it's not that I'm against it. I understand it, that's got to be a better way. All right. This one, 14. Mike, did you want to, are you, we're going to move on.
Just thank you for passing that ordinance.
Okay. Number 14, a consideration municipal code update pertaining to easement agreements, ordinance number 31, series 2018, for introduction and first reading by title only, an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, authorizing the conveyance of certain city property. Could we have a discussion from our administrator?
I'll punt this to Adam because I'm having too much fun. This is a matter we brought to you months ago regarding Mr. Hart, but he'll give you the details.
Mr. Lancaster.
Hi there, thank you. So yes, you may remember a few months ago, we had Hart come to us and ask us about transferring a piece of a outlawed Dawson Ranch to them that they are already occupying, and by license agreement, they thought that they would rather own it than encumber it with the license agreement. So at that time, the resolution was approved for us to go into a purchase agreement with them, and then the only thing we were waiting for was them to complete a lot line adjustment plat. That's been done. The deeds and agreements have been prepared. So the next step is this ordinance that will authorize a transfer of the property and for the mayor to sign the agreements and the deed once we receive payment from Hart.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions and discussion from council?
I thought this was for the license agreement.
No, we had written him a license agreement years ago for the encroachment. They purchased a property with an encroachment that they were unaware of, and so we wrote him a license agreement to correct the problem at the time of purchase for them. But since then, since they are occupying anyway, they feel more comfortable just owning the property, and we have no issues with that. It doesn't affect our, it doesn't affect our use of alibi, and with the agreements that we have, we're actually going to retain easement over the property that we're transferring anyway. It's golden for the city as far as use of the property and getting reimbursed for it.
And I think that's the key point, is that the city doesn't lose anything and still has a property right for its drainage in the after condition, because part of the deal is a grant of a drainage easement in favor of the city.
And he can enjoy his backyard without trespassing on city property.
Right.
And its impervious surface, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance 31, series of 2018, upon first reading.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there a discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you.
Number 15, consideration municipal code update pertaining to transfer property, ordinance number 32, series number 2018, for introduction on first reading by the title only, an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, vacating certain public rights of way within the city of Canyon City, Colorado. Could we have a report from staff?
I can take this one again, if you'd like.
Yes, we would like.
All right. So there is a large parcel of land currently owned by Bill Tezak that is the Colorado Quarries property that spans almost from South 11th Street to South 15th Street, actually over to Cameron Avenue. And then there's the portion of his property that's the old Fire Brick property on South 11th. He is interested, sorry, in transferring this property to a new owner, Mark Marietta, who runs Rock and Rail Train. And in doing so, there are a number of land use and land property boundary issues that need cleaned up for a clean title, similar to other projects that we've assisted with of late to help a transfer of property, which is why we're going through this process. There are a number of right-of-ways in this property that, just like the discussion we just had about Hart, that there are encroachments on, that there was never, there's no way or never any way that these were ever used as right-of-ways. They're actually included in the description of the parcels that we're talking about, and so to clean up those deeds before property transfer by the end of the year, Mr. Tezak and the buyer, Mark Marietta, have put in a request to vacate these right-of-ways. I'm not going to go through each one of them in description, you know, in detail unless you'd like me to, but more or less, they are within, as far as right-of-ways go for us, in no man's land, that there are no necessary easements for utilities or drainage or any of those sorts of things that sometimes we would normally reserve. They are just simply parcels of land within these parcels that they are interested in occupying. So this ordinance will, that's the purpose of this ordinance, is to vacate those right-of-ways that we have listed, and the vacation map is included in the packets. Also, the applicant is here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Any questions of council? Ms. Waizer?
Adam, the alley, that first alley there between 11th and 12th?
Yes.
Which looks like roughly half of it will be vacated?
Yes, so half of it is already vacated. So the northern half has already been vacated, the southern half is not, yep.
So it doesn't even exist.
Correct.
Any questions for council?
11th Street, is that where Taco Bell is at?
Correct.
Just for, this doesn't have to go through planning commission or anything like that?
No, no. And so, once this is complete, there'll be a lot line adjustment that they have prepared and we've already reviewed. That will be approved at staff level, and then there is also a somewhat unrelated but related agreement for rower crossing that'll be coming to you at the next council meeting. And they're trying to get, again, it's really important to them that they finish up their sale by the end of the year, so we're trying to get all the steps done for them. And then there's a particular order in which all these get approved and recorded at the clerk's office so that everything is clean title for them to make the transfer.
Yeah. Ms. Waizer?
Adam, on that East Street?
Yes.
The top portion of that, who owns that?
Tezak. And so, that's what's really odd about this.
So he owns both sides?
Right. So what's odd about this is that the deeds he has that were written a very long time ago are a mixture of platted lots and meets and bounds that actually overlap all these right-of-ways, which is really not a good way to transfer property or to have a deed description. So that's why, that's what will be clean in the lot line adjustment, is they'll have, you know, new legal descriptions that'll be Lot A of Tezak lot line adjustment, and so it's a real clean process for them.
But he owns on both sides of all the vacated areas.
Correct. And so, one thing that's important in this ordinance is, when we vacate property, we can either, we can either leave the designation to state statute or we can assign the ownership at that time. So the city attorney went through the trouble in this case to make sure that we're transferring these rights of way to the adjacent property, which is Bill Tezak, and they lined them up in such a way that they will lay out properly with the new lot lines. So, once these are vacated, Mr. Tezak ends up with the ownership of all vacated areas, then it's cut up by the lot line adjustment, and then it's divided by a deed per owner at that time.
Any other questions, council? None? Then I would ask for a motion. Ms. Turner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 32, series of 2018, on first reading.
Second.
Second, Ms. Arquez, thank you. Any discussion of that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Did you have any questions or?
Use it or lose it, huh?
Well, Adam, thank you and your staff for helping them get through the process by the end of the year so they can move on in their business.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on to number 17, which is consideration municipal code update pertaining to supplemental appropriation, ordinance 35, series 2018, for introduction and first reading by title only, an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Canyon City for the 2018 budget year. We have a discussion from our administrator.
Want to go back to me?
I think you skipped 33.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't.
16.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, let's go back to number 16. Let's, I'm sorry, thank you.
You did really well with the spiel, though.
I did, yeah, thank you.
You got an A+.
Consideration municipal code update pertaining to the fee interest in lots within the First Street subdivision exemption, ordinance 33, series 2018, for introduction and first reading by title only, entitled, an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, authorizing the conveyance of certain city property within the First Street subdivision exemption. And so, we should have Mr. Lancaster, I suppose, comment on that.
Yes, thank you, again. So, this one is, so this one, you may remember, we had a number of properties up on the hill at South First Street, very similar to what we just discussed over there on South 11th. We had a number of properties that were a mess, and so we had every intention of helping the property owners clean it up so they had clear title. And when it was all said and done, the county assessor's office caught something that we had missed, and that was that the city, in this particular case, was a party to the properties that were all being cleaned up and quit claimed to the appropriate owners. We had a number of vacations in that project also, and there were no, the city staff had mistakenly thought that the plat was enough for transfer, but since it was a lot line adjustment at staff level approval, instead of a subdivision plat that's approved by city council, city council never had any time to bless that transfer of property. And so, by law, you guys are the only ones that can transfer property. And so, to clean up this title for these property owners that thought they walked away at the time with good deeds, did not have anything from the city saying that we had released all ownership interest in these properties, whether we did at the time or not. It's just the cleanest way to do it. We, thanks to the diligent work of Catherine Sellers, the city attorney, she found a process that helped clean it up, worked it out with the county attorney. There was a little bit, there is a little bit of urgency on that one as well, because they want to have this addressed and cleaned up before they set the mill levies for all the property owners, which is happening.
December 10th.
Yeah, December 10th. So, this is authorizing the mayor to sign quit claim deeds to all these lots these people own, so that they have clear title, and there's no question that the city may still have interest in these properties.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of council? None? Could I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve ordinance 33-18. We have two readings on it? Just one?
Yes, we'll have a second reading at the next meeting. It's first reading.
Second.
Second, Ms. Turner, thank you. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Thank you all. Well, let's go on to my favorite, number 17, and that is the consideration of the ordinance number 35, 2018, for introduction, and this is a first reading, an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2018 budget year. Would you or Mr. Patel like to discuss that?
I can give you a quick highlight. Do you have more questions? Harry's certainly available, but again, this is on a larger level, at 30,000 fee adjustments to our major funds, which represent about 3.57% of all our funding. Let's take general fund supplemental appropriation adjustment of $170,807. That's related to two items. One, we received $30,807 in additional police grants for training and equipment, so we certainly want to accept that and amend the budget accordingly. We also transferred $140,000 from the unappropriated fund bounce back in February when we struck the deal on the four-mile water agreement, and then in turn, then transferred $140,000 to the water fund to serve as a credit for that account. Park improvement fund, that was related to increased bridge revenues, but that also helped offset our increase of water costs to the park system based upon our rate increases this past year. Self-insurance, two items really drove that. One was the retained earnings to offset claims cost, but the bigger chunk was the final payment to the sanitation district in kind of winding down that relationship. And then finally, stormwater, whole host of little transactions there. One was, for example, we have to recognize in the budget the Fremont County contribution to the hydraulic ditch study, which was $42,500. We also received $5,000 from the hydraulic ditch company for its contribution. The city then had to also contribute $42,500. This was a mid-year expenditure. We didn't originally budget for this, but certainly wanted to take advantage of that study. $10,000 contribution from Dawson Ranch, don't want to reject that, want to accept that money as part payment of our culvert study and hopefully future improvements. And then, some principal interest payments that we're projecting, and then, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but, you know, things that were anticipated at the beginning of the year when you adopted the budget, but clearly, we want to rectify and reconcile for year end.
Any questions of the administrator or Mr. Patel? Ms. Meisner?
On page, on the first page, you have a total of $648,007 with a self-insurance fund of $77,800. On the second page, I assume this is creative math, but you have a total of $334,400 with a self-insurance fund of $27,800.
That's a typo.
By my calculator, I think those would be different.
That should be 77. That's just a mathematical.
So that should be 77?
800, yeah. The combination of the 50... The combination of the fifty thousand and twenty-seven eight hundred, just a typo.
I thought it was one of those fund transfers or something.
I wish. Thank you for your diligence in catching that.
Was that Harry's mistake?
I'm sure it wasn't.
I cannot believe that.
Sure, some kind of fairy got into the system.
No, I just cannot believe that.
Copy machine did it wrong.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's probably a copy in error.
It's a finger. It's not a blade.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-five, series of two thousand eighteen, for introduction and first reading with the Meisner corrections.
Yeah.
Second. Okay, second, made in second. Any discussions on that motion? Harry, now, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hockes.
Hi.
Councilmember Meisner.
Hi.
Councilmember Turner.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Hi.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, number eighteen is the Stormwater Project Prioritization Committee issue a call for letters of interest from citizens wishing to serve on the Stormwater Prioritization Committee to be appointed in January two thousand nineteen. Would you like to expand on that, Mr. Administrator?
Yes. Similar to prior committees, we'd like to have citizen involvement, preferably citizens that would represent the eight drainage districts that create our stormwater problems in the city, coupled with as many of the council members that would like to participate. We would simply publicly notice these meetings. We anticipate two or three meetings. The staff will do the initial first draft of prioritization based upon the priorities that you've adopted and the weight behind those priorities. And based upon your appointment in January, it'll probably take two or three meetings for the committee to revise, modify that draft, and bring back to this council their proposed priorities for the utilization of eight million dollars for stormwater improvements over the next three years. Any questions?
Any question? Anybody? Mr. Meisner?
It's probably for Adam. But when I look at the prioritization criteria, I think the concept makes sense, but my question is, for example, just number one, that that weight is three times the total?
So three times its score. So if, if a project got a checkmark, it would get three checkmarks for that item.
So I guess my question is...
Or three points, so to speak.
It's within that item number one, how do you determine or ascertain, I'm not sure what the right verb there is, but how do you determine whether it gets a checkmark or not? Am I making sense?
So yeah, so that's, that's a fairly simple one, public safety or critical facilities. So we can look at the map and very quickly decide, okay, the fire station's in a flood plain, that's an important place to have a project. If it's, so there, so Dawson Ranch, for example, there are zero critical facilities in Dawson Ranch, so it doesn't get any score for that item. Where Northeast Canyon Project, where the fire station's at, would get three points.
I guess my concern is, I mean, do you reach, do you determine those scores with the consensus of the group, or do we have some qualifiers that we use?
This, the way I see this is, this group will have to, this group will have to bring the list to city council to approve. So they, their, their job will be to convince you that this is what they think is priority for whatever reason. As Mr. Hammack pointed out, when we went through this criteria, it may be an iterative process. We may go through this one time and the scores not show us anything. And so then we may have to tweak that in a way that we get some clear winners that come to the top. So the intention would be for the, for the staff to go through that process first, then get, get that to the committee, the committee to review that and look at it, and everybody be on board with what we're gonna do, and then bring that to you and convince you of the same.
All right, so it's a go or no-go for each item?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. But then, yeah, I'm just anticipating, I don't know. I mean, we might, we might pick one of the items and say, well, this isn't really a no or go, this is more warm and fuzzy type thing. We're not sure, maybe we should be waiting, it's different or something, or it's, it's too ambiguous to apply. Let's throw it out. I don't know. That's the purpose of the committee, because we haven't gone through this exercise yet. This is a new one for all of us.
Anyone else?
I do have a question. Tony, how are we gonna be soliciting community members to?
We have traditionally done, we've put out advertisements, we'll also use social media. We've had, we've done a pretty good job getting a number of people interested in prior committees, so we use that same process. If any of you know people, we certainly would appreciate you nudging them into this process, but I don't think we're gonna have any problems with a wide variety of interests. It'll be a question of, do we have one for each one of the drainage districts? That'd be ideal, but it's not a necessity, but it would be preferable?
I think in the advertising, it'll be important to lay out our expectations, like there's, well, the map, but also that there'd only be two to three meetings and about how long each of those would take. Is that, that really does a concern for some citizens, how much that's gonna take?
We'll clarify the mission statement, too.
Is that like we've done in the past, is clarify what their responsibility's gonna be so that everybody goes in knowing that?
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just have one more.
Mr. Turner?
I mean, I might suggest that we plan to have those meetings in later afternoon or evening so that folks who work could still have the opportunity to participate if they'd like.
Traditionally, we have typically, you know, a three-thirty or four o'clock start. We try to keep the meetings to hour, hour and a half max in consideration of the people involved, so we'll stick to that. It seems have worked in the past.
Okay.
What time would you prefer? Four-thirty?
Nine.
Yeah, I think four-thirty would be ideal.
I mean, it's, you know, all the meetings and the committees I've been with, it's really, you get the group together and you have a consensus, I'm gonna say, in terms of what's gonna work for everybody.
Sure.
What time, and then that's what, that's what time we wound up meeting.
Well, we could start somewhere. Let's start at four-thirty.
Okay.
Okay? All right? Any other questions, comments? Does the administrator have a report? Short report?
No, Kansas City Chiefs are playing right now. I think that's more important.
I think you're, you're out of order. Oh, okay. Mr. Meisner?
This budgets, total budget summary thing, was that part of the budget approval? I need to go back to budget.
Yeah, what do you?
Well, the budget summary where we added on to the fund balance.
Oh, that sheet I gave Steve there?
Sure. Is she?
Yes.
Okay, I have to ask this question and then we can go home. I realize what you're talking about here is, is that the monies on the bottom of this first page are the monies that account for the monies that we're carrying forward essentially. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So my question is, the two hundred thousand dollars that we were talking about, that you're talking about goes back into the fund balance for next year, why isn't it on this list if it wasn't spent?
Again, you can put it on the list, but otherwise, we generally sweep the accounts as the mayor had indicated before into the, into the general fund balance. But if you want to earmark, like we've earmarked certain projects, like property acquisition, the wayfinding sums, you can earmark that, and those monies will be appropriate for that purpose. Otherwise, the monies get swept into a general fund balance. So we have no problems. If you'd like to earmark that amount of money, we will do that for this budget.
So there's another figure that, that's somewhere, that's increasing the general fund balance by X amount of dollars?
Three million dollars, yes.
Let me give you an example. If you look at the exhibit one A on the, on the ordinance, exhibit A and the resolution number twelve.
Twelve?
Mm-hmm.
No, it can't be twelve.
That shows the general fund budget statement. It's an attachment to the resolution.
Okay.
Very first page. And if you look at the total revenues and then total expenditures is seventeen million, correct?
Okay.
On two thousand nineteen budget.
Right.
How much is over, over the revenue, we are spending, five point, five million dollars, we are spending more than revenue is, right? And then if you look at, the overall expenditures is three point four million dollars. In two thousand eighteen budget, we budgeted one point four million dollars deficit, but if you look at the estimate, it is million dollars positive. Why is that? Because of the, all the capital projects is not spent, that money, and that will be added into the fund balance.
Yeah. But if you, again, we budgeted a hundred grand in two thousand nineteen for ditch crossings. If you want to increase that by another hundred thousand, this is the time to do it.
Right, but my concern is, that money from eighteen got carried to nineteen, and nineteen, we're reallocating those dollars to different projects. And I'll leave it at that.
That's our prerogative. That's how it works.
That's correct.
And if you want to change, if you can.
I recognize that.
Okay, thank you all.
Happy Thanksgiving.
We're adjourned.